Calling, meeting the order. Vanessa, will you call the roll, please?
Chair is Saint Morton, vice chair is Huddings.
Here.
Treasurer Milliken.
Here.
Secretary Davis. Trustee DeMarty.
Here.
Trustee Gatcher.
Here.
Trustee Lea now.
All right, thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Do I hear motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a...
I'll second.
Move second, okay.
The agenda is given to us.
The new agenda.
The new agenda.
The new agenda is given, okay. Any discussion or anything? Okay. All in favor of approval of the agenda, sorry?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to tab A, approval of the minutes.
I'll move approval.
Move approval, do I hear second?
Second.
Okay. Approved in second for the minutes, are there any discussion on this? For the minutes?
He said no, I think.
No, yes, no.
I was looking for the minutes, but I found them.
Good.
I had moved them when I looked at them before.
Are we good?
Yep.
All right. And is this just an acclamation? All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to citizen participation. We are having, also later on this evening, there will be a public hearing regarding the 2018-19 budget and another opportunity for public comments. So you can come to the podium now for public comments, but if you want to comment on budget, you can also comment later as well. So first up, verbal communications for the WCC EA.
Good evening. I'm coming up here to say that we've got nothing to say. We're in collective bargaining right now, and I think it's probably inappropriate for me to have any public comment during collective bargaining. That's the reason for my silence last month and again this month. We're progressing well, I think, but I just, at this moment, I don't think it's appropriate for me to have a public comment, thank you.
Thank you. All right, other public comments? I have on the list, I apologize if I'm not saying it right, Ms. Kaiser? Did you want to comment now?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Arloa Kaiser, I'm an Ypsilanti Township person. And from an article in the Ann Arbor News, it sounded like you were going to increase or ask for an increase in property taxes, which I am opposed to. There are many people who are on fixed incomes, and a lot of the money and wishes of the people come from more of the Ann Arbor area. And they're the ones that are voting for all these things. And I just want my voice heard, and a lot of the older people in our township feel the same way. And a lot of things, it's nice to have fancy things, but let's keep with the basics. Get the good education for these students, good teachers. Fancy buildings go away, and what's fancy today isn't tomorrow. So let's get the good teachers and teachers, professors, whatever the proper terminology is these days. But, and I see on the walls, excuse me, that we have a lot of donors to the community college. I've heard many good things, and especially that the community college is teaching the trades, which these days, the old timers are retiring, and there aren't a lot of new people taking their places. And thank you for the great work that you have done on making this a known entity, college good, and putting out good students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Are there any other public comments at this time? All right. Vanessa, were there any written communications?
No.
No? Okay. Madam Chair, do you want me to continue for a few more? Okay. Moving on to our special reports. First up, the curriculum and assessment report, Mr. N.
I'm not going to push through here, but we have Michelle Gary and David Wooton, the chairs of the Curriculum and Assessment Committee. They're going to do their annual update, but also share with us a poster presentation from the most recent Higher Learning Commission Conference, where Joy Geer, the Director of Curriculum Assessment, and our Curriculum Assessment team here are presenting.
All of the board members should have this pamphlet, which is just a tri-fold representation of what we have here on this poster. Excellent. So hello, good evening. My name is Michelle Gary, and I am a faculty member in the Foreign Language Department here at the college, and I also chair the Assessment Committee. And we've experienced a whole lot of positive activity on the assessment front these past two years. I'm sure most of you know, but a couple of years ago, WCC joined the Assessment Academy, which is part of the Higher Learning Commission's, they offer two separate academies, and we joined the Assessment Academy in the spring of 2016. It's a four-year program that's aimed at advancing and accelerating assessment initiatives at two- and four-year schools. This major college initiative is also directly tied to our, the reaffirmation of our accreditation. HLC will be making their visit in the spring of 2020. And the way that our accreditation is reaffirmed is a little different than it had been in the past, and we are now part of this cohort of the Assessment Academy, and that's a big piece of our continued accreditation with HLC. Recently, the college presented our Assessment Academy Action Plan, which were our initial four priorities for assessment initiatives on campus, as well as a progress that we've been making these past two years. And that was done in a poster presentation, this is a poster, which is in the fold-out as well, and that was presented at the HLC conference that was held a couple of weeks ago in Chicago. The pamphlet you have in front of you pretty much summarizes the major points or initiatives tied to assessment here, and I'm going to elaborate on each of those priorities right now. So the Assessment Academy initiative consists of four major priorities. Course assessment is the first. The assessment of programs is the second priority. Improving the climate and culture surrounding assessment here on campus is the third. And the final priority is a revision of our general education outcomes, which I know the board is aware of that because you have voted to align those with the MTA, the Michigan Transfer Agreement fairly recently. And David Wooton, the Curriculum Chair here, will be talking about that initiative here in a few minutes. During our first year in the academy, we focused very heavily on course assessments. So our goal was to increase both the number of courses assessed, as well as the number of faculty that participated in the assessment process. And I'm very happy to report, and you'll see on the pie charts in there, that faculty participation has increased from 50% of faculty participating actively in the assessment process to 99% of faculty. And that's in a little less than two years. So that's a very positive number and a really big improvement. Our committee has been working overtime, and we have reviewed 96 course assessment reports in just this last academic year, 2017 to 2018. In addition to the uptick in the quantity of assessment work that's done, I'm most pleased as chair in the qualitative improvements that I've seen, looking and reviewing all of the course assessment plans that are on the master syllabi in the assessment reports. I've noticed a shift in the climate on campus. I do think that that's really directly related to all of the professional development opportunities that we've had. We've had HLC, an HLC scholar here that's given informational sessions on how to very effectively and meaningful conduct program assessment. And then my committee's run lots of workshops and just hands-on training for our faculty here. We've done that during in-service, during division meetings, and during general faculty meetings. More and more instructors, just on the cultural front of things, are using and embracing embedded assessment, which is considered a best practice now. When I first got here, it wasn't always done that way, and assessment was seen as this sort of add-on that you had to do, and it seemed not very organic or natural to the class. And it was just this add-on thing. But now faculty are using embedded instruments, so their assessment tools or evaluations that they're already using to evaluate student work, so faculty find them more meaningful, so they're more invested. And then they're able to identify areas of strength and weakness in the course. And then the whole goal is to improve student success. So that's been a huge cultural shift that we've seen. Two other major priorities that we've really been looking at this year, we've shifted our focus a little away from course assessment because we assume that that's just ongoing at this point, and we're looking now to assess our programs. And that is more challenging because there are a lot more moving parts with our programs. We have more instructors involved, lots of times we're using several courses to assess a program, and so we need to get all those courses assessed before we can get that data. We sometimes have outside, what are they called? Not agencies, but, somebody help me out here.
Professionals?
Thank you. So advisory committees, that's what I'm looking for. So we sometimes have lots of moving parts here, advisory committees, creditors, certification exams, so things that are not necessarily part of a class. But we are making a lot of headway as well with program assessment this year. We've had really good assessment reports coming in, some that need a little improvement. But we have, we have a lot more coming in than we've ever seen in all my years on the committee. We are holding a lot of professional development opportunities for faculty to get this work done. And then our fourth priority, which we have made a whole lot of headway on, is the revision of our general education outcomes, which again, you know about. And I'm going to turn it over to David to update you on that.
Good evening, everybody. As Michelle said, my name's David Wooton, faculty member in the Biology Department here, and then also the Chair of the Curriculum Committee. So as Michelle stated, one of the four legs was to revise our Gen Ed. Washtenaw, along with every other community college around Michigan, has gone MTA. This has come through the board here, so you know that alignment. And ultimately, prior to this, you have to realize Washtenaw would have been considered a minus plus plus school, which was a student coming in to take our Gen Ed requirements and get a degree, would be short of the MTA requirements, that's the minus side. And if someone came here and wanted to get their MTA and degree, they would have had to add two extra courses for our Gen Ed to be able to graduate and be a completer here with the MTA. So we were a minus plus plus school. We did that revision, it came through this board, and now we know that basically our Gen Ed equals MTA. It is that aligned, it is that simple. Because of that work that we did as a joint committee with faculty and administration, it was a lot of work, but that got done. And in other schools, they have talked about this taking upwards of several years to do. So the fact that we were able to get this done within a semester or so was pretty impressive. So far, us and Henry Ford Community College about the only schools that have really pushed forward to take their Gen Ed to MTA alignment. And so we're ahead of the curve, and we're leading the way, and we hear this often when we go to HLC conferences. Given that alignment now with our Gen Ed with MTA, we have to reverse engineer and go back and start making sure our programs all align with MTA and our Gen Ed accordingly. So, let's see, all 27 AA and AS degrees now reflect the new Gen Ed requirements that align with MTA, and several of our AAS degrees are now aligned. We have seen about three or so new program proposals come through the Curriculum Committee, and eight program changes to reflect this. And now the next step is we have to revise our Gen Ed strands. So those Gen Ed strands, the language that we have, we have to revise the name of the strand, if applicable. We have to revise the strand description and language of that strand, and then underneath each one of these strands, like natural science and humanities and writing, underneath those there are outcomes that have to be defined and have to be measurable and ultimately have to be assessed. So we have just this semester put through all those revisions for all of our Gen Ed strands, the language and the outcomes, the faculty participation, to get those through, and those will be working their way up to you soon. On the UAT front, just something different, we have 145 UAT courses that basically one faculty member, Tony Esposito, was working through right now, doing a phenomenal job. So in the last five months, we've had about 40% of the courses that are no longer relevant or offered, those have been activated and off of our books. We've had 26 new courses that Tony has put online. In five months, my new 26 new courses have come through for some 85 total submissions we've seen in the Curriculum Committee just on UAT. And I got to tell you, it's not just a quantitative argument, qualitatively what's coming through through UAT is improving. It is getting more and more and more aligned with what we see with curricular standards here at Washtenaw, so it's really, really improving. The next step here with that Gen Ed, MTA revision in our strands, is now that we have them written, now that we have the outcomes present, we have to assess those outcomes, which allows me to bounce it back to Michelle.
That was always a good thing. So there's not much to bounce back. Just in these last two years, because it's a four-year commitment in the Assessment Academy, we're about halfway through now, our two big priorities are to really increase the quality and the number of program assessment reports that come through, and then to really devise a brand-new strategy for assessing our general education outcomes. One thing that is a challenge for us is for several of our Gen Ed outcomes in the past, we used the CAP test, which is an SAT exam, and it's no longer available to us, and that was not so easy for Joy to administer necessarily, but it wasn't overly cumbersome in lots of ways. And so now we have to redesign, pretty much from square one, an assessment plan for our Gen Ed. But we've got two years, well, less than two years, but we'll get that done. So Gen Ed assessment, program assessment priorities for the next two years. Any questions at all for us?
Trustee?
Two questions. I'm trying to understand this, you've been working with it for some time, and this is totally new to me.
Yep.
One question on the participation rate, which is phenomenal, it's up to 99%. Does that include part-time faculty?
It does not. Well, some, some part-time faculty do participate in these assessment and curriculum initiatives, but that percentage is just based on full-time faculty.
Aren't there some courses that are pretty much all taught by part-time faculty?
Correct.
So wouldn't it be good to have participation at nine, a high, what I'd like to see is what the, what we're doing with a goal for participation by part-time faculty, and I recognize that they're not paid a lot, and this is extra work demand.
It is.
And maybe it means we are asked to give some funding to support faculty, part-time faculty doing this added...
I think that it's a great recommendation, and that is happening. So those numbers aren't reflected here. So in my area in foreign language, I teach Spanish, I don't teach Arabic, Mandarin, German, French, so I can't assess any of those. Fortunately, there's a full-timer that does the French. But I've spoken with my dean, and I know with Kim in the past, and they have given stipends or offered stipends to part-time faculty to do that work since we can't do it. I don't know what the numbers are, though, in terms of part-time faculty participating in those initiatives, but for certain areas, there, there is no other option.
Right.
Because we don't have the discipline expertise. Yes?
And then, I'm try, I don't understand, and maybe you could help me just with an example, what's the difference between an embedded assessment versus not embedded?
Yeah.
So what would a technique be or a methodology be that makes it embedded?
That's a...
Just give me one example.
That's a really good question. Okay, I'm going to use my area. So before assessment was embedded, and some folks still do things that aren't embedded, it would be, basically, you evaluate your students a certain way to see how they're measuring up to the goals for the course. So we use assignments, presentations, projects, exams, quizzes. But then to assess, we would devise a whole new thing that we didn't necessarily find meaningful, that really showed us if students were achieving the goals or the outcomes for the course, and that's not embedded, to add on something that we think we're supposed to do to check the box for HLC.
Right.
Embedded assessment is to use something that you're already using to evaluate student work in the course. So it could be a final exam. And so if that's something that you find is meaningful, if you've devised and formulated your class and your evaluation measures well, then that will tell you a lot about the course, where students are hitting the mark, where they're falling short, if you have to resequence things. We found it to be a more authentic indicator, more meaningful to faculty, but also more meaningful to students. A lot of times, the add-on things that aren't embedded, aren't graded, students have no skin in the game, or they're given as extra credit assignments. So it's the students that are struggling the most, maybe that need the extra credit, that take it, so you don't see how some of the higher succeeding students are doing. So it really does give much more reliable data, and it's more meaningful usually, to both the instructor and the students, especially if students can get feedback. You know, if it's used in a formative way before the semester's done. Does that make sense?
It's a little bit. I thought all courses had final exams. I mean, even my art class has had a final portfolio review.
So, so these are different, so there are two different things. One is how students are evaluated or graded in a course, that's evaluation. You can call it assessment too, but this is a formal assessment process, which we have to write up a whole report, and then HLC reviews those. And that formal assessment process can be a certification exam that isn't part or requirement of your course, but that could be the assessment tool.
I see.
But the embedded piece is something that's naturally part of, of the course anyway.
Okay.
Does that explain it a little bit?
A little bit. Since I'm not a faculty member and doing this on a regular basis, I'm still, I'd love to sit down with some faculty people and see
For sure.
How this works and what it means to them in terms of added work or...
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, we could even show you examples of some of the feedback we've gotten with embedded versus non-embedded, and how we found it more relevant and meaningful. Oftentimes, too, if there's a certification exam, the only other thing, and I don't want to belabor this too much, take up too much time, but oftentimes, if there is a certification exam, which can be a great measure, it doesn't break down the data according to learning goal. So you, you may know that students are either hitting this big over, like mark or not, so they're like a 70% cutoff, but you don't know at the individual goal or outcome level where you can target improvement in the class. So are they, are they speaking really well, but they can't write really well? Or is it the reverse, and you may not see if you just get an overall score? So the more embedded it is, the more you can really drill down into those different nuances.
Yeah. I think your, your questions are great. But, you know, we need to keep moving on here. And Michelle, you did a wonderful job. Now, Trustee Gatcher.
I just wondered if there's anything you need? Do you need more clerical help, or equipment, or time, or...
I don't think we...
Money, or whatever?
I don't know that we need more clerical help, that would be much more a question for Joy.
Yeah. Joy?
We're good as a moment, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I think that we'd need continued support from the administration in terms of time and resources to, to really keep progressing with this work in a meaningful way.
I hope you get them.
Thank you.
You will. You're amazing, the two of you.
Thank you.
What you have done in this past two years is amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your leadership, and the faculty want to work with you. So it's not only your knowledge, but how you've motivated your colleagues to work with you. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say, wait just a minute, go ahead, Trustee. Did you have a question?
I'm just waving my thanks to...
Yeah, I just want to say, this is the most in-depth assessment I have ever heard in my 23, 24 years on the board.
We've made a lot of progress.
Thank you so much. I really, really appreciate this.
Thank you so much.
This is going to mean so much, just, not just for us hearing it on the board, but for the school, the institution itself and the students, and especially for the HLC, seeing how they're going to be here shortly.
Sure. Yeah, just in a couple of years.
Exactly. So we really got to, you know, be right on the spot with all of this stuff. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
And your team. Okay. Now, I understand the HLC poster fair, and that is this?
Yeah, it was part of our...
This is part of this? Okay, so that's... Okay, great, thank you. Now we're going to the sabbatical report, disappearing kids, uh, birds, excuse me, with Dean Good.
So I'm excited to welcome up a new face.
Oh, an old face.
David Wooton is going to do sabbatical part two. He learned about a Civil War hero and his bride, love and loss. Tonight, you're going to go to the Keys of Florida and learn about love and loss with birds and snakes. David presented to our division and actually our entire faculty a couple of months ago, and everybody was mesmerized. It was so good, we brought it to you to share. So David's going to share it with you now?
It's one thing to give a curriculum report standing here, but I've never stood still in my life to talk, so if you allow me, I'm going to go move around a little bit. What I'm going to be talking about just here briefly is the results of my sabbatical work that I had last semester. After 11 years, I finally took a sabbatical, and there was only one place for me to go, and that was an island down in the Gulf of Mexico that I've done some previous work on, so I'd like to share that with you here briefly. Seahorse Key Island. It is working, okay. Seahorse Key Island is about four miles off the coast of Florida, you can kind of see right in there, in that northern part on the Gulf side. About four miles off the coast, there is a dune island called Seahorse Key. And it's about 65 hectares, about 165 acres large. It is uninhabited. There are trees, there are all white sand, palm trees, a lot of wildlife, a lot of snakes, and not much of anything else out there besides birds.
Who owns it?
The unit, well, it's a US Fish and Wildlife, so it's, the government owns it. But Florida, University of Florida actually rents about two acres of it for having a marine station.
Bill, you can't develop it.
Oh, yeah.
That was not my wish.
So here's what's special about the island.
Is there camping on it?
There is no camping on it. You're allowed to camp on this island for this next slide.
You could not want to go. I mean, oh, you'll, you'll...
So on this island, here's what you have, right? You have 65 hectare, 165 acre island, and you have palm trees everywhere, and every year about 10,000-plus birds come and feed on this island. So these are things like pollacins, cormorants, ebit, parents, it's absolutely magical. There's also an extremely large population of Florida cottonmouths on the island. This is about a six-foot venomous snake, as you can see there in the image of them, and therefore that's why you don't want to camp on this island, because there's a lot of them out there. Morton did some of this work in '69, my doctoral advisor, Dr. Hartley White, colleague, Dr. Coleman Cheehee have ongoing work there. And I did some of this work in 2003, 2004, but I was even part of my doctoral work that I never finished. I came back to teach, one over a place called Washtenaw, Ann Arbor, so couple of islands to Ann Arbor is where I went. Here's what's cool about the island folks. These birds come up, once a year, they're for a couple of weeks, right? They fly out in the Gulf, they scoop up fish, they bring them back to their nests in their rucheries to feed their chicks. And when you have 10,000 birds, and they're all feeding their chicks fish, a lot of them fall from the nest, hence the name, they're falling from trees. These cottonmouth snakes do not actively forage. They don't go around, they can't go in the saltwater, they don't go catch store of fish. They have adapted to sit underneath these ruchery trees and wait for fish to fall on from the heads. So they sit and they scavenge, there's a scavenger ecology, right? Now that's interestingly enough on its own, and here you have these large venomous snakes scavenging dead fish that's falling from birds up above. But what's really interesting, and what my doctoral advisor, Dr. Oldie White, was able to figure out, is that there is a large, large, large population of rats on the island. They're introduced, it's not uncommon, and rats are classic nest predators. They will climb up trees, they will eat the chicks, they will eat the eggs, it's very dangerous to have around. Well, if you go in and you start looking at where the rats are on the island, all the snakes and the birds are on the other end. Something funny is going on here. So we were able, through years of work, looking at this, to very clearly see that there's a correlation here. There's dots, you can't tell from this distance, but these show the bird's nest and the snake occurrences over on the west side of the island, and all the rats are over here. Why? Because it's not safe for a rat to be walking around the leaf litter, or crawling up the branches when there are numerous large venomous snakes around. So there is a mutualistic relationship between the birds and the snakes. Nowhere else in the world is there a mutualistic relationship between the birds and snakes and rats. Anyone around the world who works with snakes on islands knows Seahorse Key, it is a very special place, and then it happened.
Ah, what happened?
In 2015, over the course of three days, every bird on Seahorse Key Island left. This has been recorded for over 80 years, it's been taken census data. And for some reason, over the course of three days, every single bird on that island left. They left their nests, they left their eggs, they left their chicks, they packed up and went several miles away to an apple, the course of three days. There was some acute environmental trauma that scared these birds off the island, they have no idea what it was. They are still working out of... They are still working out to this day. The birds have not returned to date. So of course, the question is, how does this affect the ecology of the island? I can't go down and figure out why the birds disappeared, but we can start looking at the ecology of this because as we just stated, there's a connection between the birds and the snakes and their wildlife there. So the goals of my sabbatical work were to go down to Seahorse Key, to survey and work on the island, looking at things we call species richness, that's the number of species that we have there, species abundance, how many of each species. And then to go through and start looking at the trophic relationships, and trophic just means feeding. That's all it means in ecology. It's trophic feeding, it means something to deal with food. From that work, I wanted to do two things. I wanted to illustrate the first food web for Seahorse Key Island, which is what ecologists use to understand relationships. And I also wanted to go in and use some of that to build what's called an interaction network, not to solve the bird disappearance, I'm sorry, unless I know, I'll come back and tell everybody what we don't know yet. We're still working on it. So I went down, I was down in the field on the island for about seven days, hitting all major types of habitats on the island there. So everything from diving in the seagrass beds with lots of sharks, it's kind of interesting, but diving in the seagrass beds, working the oyster reefs, getting up in the tidal flats and then getting into the forest, working with the snakes and so forth, to look at these relationships. And there's other parts of the work here that I'm not going to belabor, that's more quantifiable work that's for other publications. But I wanted to focus on the food web work here. When I got done with that, I came back with all that information. I did not want to, I'm not a good photographer and I sure as heck can't take 50 pictures of all the perfect species on the island. And I didn't want to deal with copyrights problems and I do like to illustrate when possible. So I illustrated 50 different images, took about 215 hours, kind of you can see the process of one of those. These are public pencil and ink drawings that I worked on over the course, on weekends, on mornings. Michelle was very understanding, what are you doing? Oh, you're out there drawing again. Okay, fine. But the end result of that work was to produce this. That is the first food web ever produced for Seahorse Key Island. It's the first of its kind. And I, I have the illustration up there. I did, every line that you see basically shows energy transfer, who's eating who. And ultimately, every line that was either observed, was measured, or is based off of already published data because it's hard to see all these relationships. But we know that blue crabs eat marsh perri roo snails, so we're okay, we can put that on there. Here's what I want to share with you that's interesting. I didn't know it and didn't expect it. I started putting it all together and moving my lines around, getting it all right, checking the literature and such, and there it is. See it? See the triangle? Triangles do not occur in food webs, folks. It's spaghetti, sure, we've got lots of spaghetti going on, but that is something very unique. And that triangle is the mutualistic relationship that I was talking about. That's observed, no, I was just popped out one day, I was very excited, and there it is. So likewise, there are lots of relationships that are not just trophic, right? It's not just everyone's out there eating each other, right? There are other things that are going on ecologically. I gave a couple of examples on this slide. You can see here, oyster reefs, for example, stabilize sediments, they filter water, they offer habitat. This has nothing to do with feeding ecologically, but it's important ecologically. And I don't like that food webs sometimes fill in. So I took those relationships and I added them on, which I know it's hard to see and you have handouts. But you can see some of these dash lines representing nesting habitat, you can see some other lines representing key composition. You can see things like here that, you know, deter rat predation. There are other relationships that I've illustrated on the food web that are not trophic, but of ecological significance. And that allowed me to see that we have some nine different microhabitats within that system that can be isolated out. And that allows us to look at these relationships now that if you go in and you remove the birds, then obviously you lose your fish. If we lose the fish, we could potentially eventually lose the snakes. And now we have to look at every single relationship that's broken because of the lack of these species and that diversity, what ecological effect it will have. Now, I was happy with that there and I could use the food web that you had, but there's something else we can do, which is if you look at network analysis, people who work in business know this, people do computer networking, people work with proteins in hospitals and research proteomics. You can take this type of information, turn it binary, plug it into network software and actually kick out a different type of image that allows you to quantitatively measure these relationships, not just qualitatively show, but actually quantify them. So I learned UCI net draw, which thank goodness is network analysis for dummies because I don't do this kind of work. But I did it and I was able to produce that image right there, which is exactly the same as the food web you just saw. That image is now measurable. It is quantifiable. You can apply statistics to it. And as a result of that image there, you can go through, we can play with it, we can rearrange it. This is a centrality measure, patricians who has the most connections and links. And you can see here are all of our birds. You have, you see here, things like little fish, black rats, blue crabs have a greater significance ecologically, if you will. You never pick that up from looking at that food web drawing. It has to be analyzed through network analysis. And as a result of that, I'm not going to go through eigenvectors and Markov clustering, but just trust me that you can take, you can take all of these measurements now and you can take them and you can apply them to things like, okay, who's the more significant species? Who are keystone? Which ones hold important positions or hubs within a network? People that work with network know this language very well.
Can you do this for a community college?
You should, good. I can't, but some would. So here's the results of the work here, kind of what was the end result of all of this, right? First and foremost is we have this food web that is now available to use for anybody. There's no copyright here, there's no authority. I give this to anyone who wants to use it. It's been added to the course content here in Washtenaw. So students in my ecology and evolution course, my zoology course, food biology, we talk about this case system and now I can add more detail to it. It is now being used at curriculum at University of Florida and Santa Fe Community College. They are now using this food web image in their curriculum and it's being used by the Nature Coast Biological Station. That is a collaborative effort of all these different groups that worked with me on this. I presented it already at the Michigan Academy of Science Conference, it's coming up with the MCCD conference and more biology conferences locally. And then I've got an invite to the University of Florida's Art史 Department to present this sometime either this year or next year. I found out only recently that the work's going to be published and featured in a Knoxville University Press on Islands and Snakes. So that, I did not expect that and that was a very nice gift that a colleague of mine said, guess what we're going to do with your work? So I look forward to hopefully seeing that in there soon. And then the network analysis, you saw stuff that I'm going to consider for journal publication to put in because it's more quantitative and formally scientific. So I want to thank number one, Washtenaw. This was an incredible opportunity. And after 11 years in the classroom, it was nice to click on the laser pointer, strap my boots on, go do some of the work that I am passionate about and be able to bring it back to campus here in Ann Arbor. And the support, the funding, the resources you guys gave was fantastic. So thank you for that opportunity. Don't take the way sabbaticals, those are fantastic. Colleagues in Florida that are here, so who cares about them, thank you to them. Couple faculty members here, Jen Baker and Julia Vlecht helped me with imagery. And I have to thank my wife who supported me wonderfully when I was off on islands playing with watch venomous snakes. She was, you know, winged on the floor. So thank you very much, everybody, for the opportunity.
Any questions? Yes.
What's happened to the snake population in the three years since?
Right now, we used to go out and in the course of a couple of hours, we would come anywhere between 20 to 40 snakes in the course of a couple of hours. I was out there for three days and found one.
So the rats are all over the island now?
The rats, we haven't measured yet because most of the people out there are snake people working right now and bird people. So right now we know that the snake population's decreased and we've had three anecdotal observations of cannibalism in the snakes. So it's starting to eat each other now.
And then the island that the birds moved to?
Yep.
Has there been some sort of a model similar to the triangle?
Not yet. This has never been done.
That's established itself there?
Yeah, there's been nothing done on those other islands yet. This is the first of its kind there. Now, one of the graduate students, a doctoral student who's at U of F, Mark Sanfels, is working on that other island to look at that trophic dynamic as well right now. And he's using this model.
Very interesting.
It sounds like something of this has never happened before in nature, I guess. So this would seem to be, as you say, just astounding how the birds had just packed up and left.
Yeah. It would be great if that was true. Because the likely candidate is after literally years of trying to figure out what happened to these birds, the best report we have is that Homeland Security unofficially, off the record, wink, wink, gave people at U of F notice that they were flying maneuvers in that area around that time. That's as far as we've gotten.
And how far is the next island?
Two miles. It's two miles out.
Wow. That's interesting.
The triangle showed arrows going both ways between the snakes and the rats. What is, what's the significance of that?
Sure. So one is that the snakes, if the rats come around, the snakes can absolutely consume them. I mean, they'll eat, you know, fish falling from the trees, but if a rat comes in front of them, they will envenomate it and take it. The other direction arrow is the deterrence by the snakes on the rats to those nest predictions. So one is a trophic eating relationship and the other one is it just keeps you away from the nests.
Interesting.
Any other questions?
Part of the rats and snakes getting on that island and the birds swimming out there? It's not like they walk across the ice like they do around here.
No. That island used to be connected to the mainland of Florida about 25,000 years ago, so there was an established population. 7,000 years ago, it attained island and dune status. So the water, you know, water rose. They got stranded. Exactly.
Interesting. Thank you.
Just want to say, now, are you still working on your doctorate degree?
No.
You're not?
No, I am not.
Not at all?
I have too many students now, so I'm happy where I'm at.
So you're contributing to the betterment of education with this and sharing all of your knowledge?
As best I can, yes.
All right. Well, I'd say thank you so much. Really appreciate this.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity.
Outstanding work.
Thank you.
Very much. Wow, that was quite interesting. We go down to monthly reports, personnel recommendations, that's tab B.
Well, that's certainly a tough act to follow.
Okay.
Not nearly as compelling as our employment activity for the last month, but you'll see the personnel recommendations reflect. In terms of full-time hires, we had a total of 10. Most of those were replacements. A couple of notables, in fact, the gentleman sitting to my left, Mr. Allen, is on board and official as our new vice president of facilities development. So with that, I would submit the report to the board for your approval.
Okay. Do you have any questions? There's no questions?
Yes, one.
Yes.
Under the full-time hires, it's under instruction, but it's a retention data analyst. If we're going to the CRM thing, do we need that person to collect that data? I mean, we're going to a system for retention, right? We're going to approve that tonight. So is this person connected to that or?
Correct. Correct. And so a big piece is that this person is going to be helping us with the CRM.
Okay.
If that's approved. But another piece of it is that really defining academic data and data very continuous that we need to make decisions about where we should be looking at opportunities for retention. So, you know, in everybody's day-to-day operations, there's a lot of opportunities like, recently we were looking at transcript requests, students who are looking for transcripts to move to another college. Are there opportunities there for us to talk to those students about articulation agreements? So this person is going to do a lot of proactive instead of reactive looks at data to help us figure out where we have more opportunities to help retain students. And a lot of that will be folding into the CRM if it's approved.
Okay.
Okay. And the new campus resource officer, have we met that person?
No.
Are we going to meet that person?
Yes, but not today.
Not today. I'd like to meet that person.
We don't normally do that, but we can.
Yeah, we do, for full-time.
No, we don't.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but we don't. We haven't done that in a long time. Now, if this is something that the board would like, then we can consider it.
I would like to meet Matthew Leish.
The board. I would like to know if the, if the board would like that.
Sure. I hear two people.
Who is this? This is the resource officer?
The campus resource officer supervisor.
Supervisor.
I don't see what.
I've got a question in regard to that.
I'm not through with this yet. Please. I'd like to just make it clear that we have not had outside of the management where people come in to the board meetings. We haven't done that in a long time. And I'm just saying, if this is what we would like, to have a person to come in, then we will.
I mean, it would seem to me if there was a presentation that was necessary, that would be appropriate, but for us to summon employees to meetings seems to me, I mean, if it's an organic.
Just don't run into him in a dark alley and not know who he is.
Well, I think we could probably arrange an introduction to you, Ruth. Thanks.
Yes, I've heard it.
Henry Yard did this. It's a campus resource officer supervisor. Wasn't Scott the supervisor for the campus resource officers? So now is there, is there like a middle management level in a four officer department?
No.
Scott is the chief.
Right.
And reporting to Scott is the supervisor who oversees the staff.
But the staff, the entire staff is four people, including Scott?
No, they also have campus security as part of that staff.
How many positions will be under the supervisor?
Like, how many positions?
Well, that includes the non-sworn officers as well. It's like there's 27 in the department.
So all the people in the public safety, including the non-sworn officers, are going to report to the supervisor?
Actually, we have multiple supervisors because we have like the, you know, a day supervisor, afternoon supervisor. So the CRO supervisor will be helping with getting the law enforcement agency up and running and will be supervising the CROs, but will also assist with the non-sworn officers as well.
Could I get a job description on this position?
I'd rather that not happen.
This whole police department organization thing is really important.
I think right now they're still working on this and I think it's prematurely to be asking for job descriptions. I don't think that the board needs to do that at this point in time until things have totally settled down. We just got.
If I have to bring a resolution, I'll bring a resolution.
I don't think it's a matter of resolution. I think it's a matter right now, let this department get themselves together. They just now hiring, they just now hiring a new supervisor.
Are you requesting a presentation regarding?
No. All I want is a written job description, which has to exist.
Want a job description?
Before we hired a person, it probably existed.
Well, we usually do see job descriptions, but not, not for this type of position.
It seems to me that does veer a little into micromanagement.
It does.
I mean, I understand.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is the, this is the police department.
Yeah, I understand. So, you want job, you think a board member can just demand a job description of any employee that they want to, and the board man, and our president is supposed to just do what you ask? I mean, what, what is that?
Are, do these job descriptions not exist?
I don't know.
Do I need to do a Freedom of Information Act request again?
I would hope not.
I would hope not, too.
Right, but I mean, I mean, I may just, I don't know why.
It seems like a simple request that should be easy to meet.
If, if you're asking for job descriptions for this particular person, I think you relay your request to the president, and she can decide whether or not.
Not for the person, it's for the position.
Right, for the position.
Right.
And so, if you want to direct that to the president, she's noted it, and we'll take it, she'll take it under advisement, right?
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Ed.
I just remember that when I started on the board, HR gave us five big folders of all the job descriptions at the college. So, it's not as though we haven't seen job descriptions.
That's not what I said.
So, for $72,000.
Don't take, don't take what I said out of context, please.
I think the president will take it under advisement, and we'll get back to you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Ms. Ed.
Um, I was happy to see the, um, the breakout in the March board minutes that you did for, um, various job categories at the college, and whether they were, um, the total number of them, the total, the percent that were minority, the percent, the number of females, and the percent that were females. You remember that? And they were executive administration, professional management, um, what's that? Independent technical faculty, custodian, and OPA, OTA. And, um, that was, it was very helpful to see that. I just wonder, is it possible to see that for 2010, or for five years ago, or something, to see where it's gone and where it's come from? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what you're saying. Requesting.
May I? So, are you requesting, um, for us to go back?
Yeah.
Which is fine, and see if there's a trend?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, yeah, we could try, yes, we can try, but I'm not sure our data's not that good back then.
Sure. I don't know if it's 10, or 12, or 15, whatever, you can, as far back as you could go.
And I'll put that in the board memo.
Yeah, that would be very nice.
Great.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Um, all in favor to accept this personnel recommendation? Say aye.
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 Foes? Right. We go to tab C, financial reports. Vice President Johnson.
Great, thank you. Um, you will note that for this month, a little difference than prior months, app, app for the board had approved the revised budget, um, that our year-to-date results compared to the revised budget year-to-date is about right on, that we're staying right on track with revenue and expenditures as well. Uh, and so, we have also per the board's direction, we have transferred additional funds both into campus repair maintenance, an extra million, three million into deferred maintenance, and 250,000 into the furniture fund. Uh, and those, and those transfers have, have been made accordingly.
Any questions? Mr. DeVarden?
Um, I'm wondering if you could address, there was a big, relatively large differential on the health sciences expenditures, and if you could maybe say something about that. And I also note, and I think it might be related, next year's budget has a significant increase in request in that same, what seems to be the same line item. So, I'm wondering if you could just address the shortfall this year, or the over expenditure this year, and the fact that you're addressing it in peers in the next budget.
Absolutely. It's, uh, it, thank you for pointing that, that correlation out, is that we, we did have significant growth in the health sciences area this, this past year. Uh, so, a lot of these monies are for part-time faculty and, and overload to be able to support the enrollment trends within the area. So, that's, that's the reason for, for that variance.
And then, you see that, uh, it appears is continuing that we're adding that to the budget in next year's.
We are, yeah. There's a, as, as you've seen in our proposed budget, a rather significant increase is in faculty resources to be able to support the enrollment in program growth for the health sciences area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Um, I have a couple of related questions. First of all, um, we, we talk about the revenue for fall and winter being about what we expected, but when we look at the, um, you know, the page two, it's down, both fall and winter. The, uh, the variance was negative. So, the, did we meet the goal, or did we not meet the goal?
We, we met the goal. Uh, the goal was a forecast that we had developed in January.
Uh-huh.
And we used the best information we had at the time.
Right.
Uh, and since that point in time, there has been very minor student drops that have occurred. Uh, I didn't go back and adjust the forecast, which was the basis for the revised budget for, for fall and winter. I, I just let those very minor differences be reflected here. It's been really the difference between the best data that I had in January.
Yeah.
And what's really occurred since.
So, you think most of that is due to students dropping, rather than to not enrolling?
I do, yes.
Okay, all right. Um, and then, I was looking back at, um, April 2017, and we approved $120,000 to site plan for a, um, website?
Site plan for website, yes.
Right, and what happened? Did we do that?
We did. That was one of three, three contracts that we had. So, the, the site pen contract was for some, what I call, front-end custom development around the student experience to do career explore and job explore and tie it to our pro, our, our programs. Um, that is one element of our entire new website, website, you know, design.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we're, we're on track to have that new website up November 1st, and, and test, and, and test site available later this summer.
So, this wasn't for the website, this was for the beginning, what we did in April 17?
This was.
$120,000?
This was for the website. It's one element of custom.
For the beginning of it, yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. I have one more question, and it's sort of related, but over the past year, I've heard presentations about, um, the million plus for the two IT people that are coming. I've heard five, four, 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 500,000 for police every year. Um, I've heard of the 2.3 million for building repair, and now, the CRM is coming for 320,000. And I'm just wondering where all this money is coming from? If we could get a chart of those large projects and where the funding is coming from? I'm just concerned that we're double dipping, if you know what I mean.
Well, the funding is, is coming from and supported by our revenue sources.
Yeah.
So, tuition revenue and property tax revenue, state aid. So, it's the entire, there's no specific earmarking of any given funding source to a given contract per se for the general fund. It's the collection of all of our revenue as compared to the expenditures. And so, the contracts, whether they be for the campus work contract the board approved, or, or the CRM project, those are all components of, of the total general fund operating budget to which the board has approved.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm not sure where exactly, but I wanted to ask this, and it falls in budget maybe, perhaps, as much as anything. I've received three or four calls from members of the general public who use our athletic facility about hot water.
Yes.
Are we having problems with hot water there, and are we gonna have to make an investment in some hot water provision?
You mean, the fitness center?
The fitness.
There was hot water today, I'm just saying.
Okay, well, I don't use it, but I, over the course of the last several weeks, maybe a month, I've had several people who know I'm on the Board of Trustees to say, how come there is no hot water in the fitness center?
Actually, I just received an email today from Vice President Allen regarding the hot water situation at the fitness center. And I believe, and, and I'm gonna ask him to talk about that, but I believe Damon has been bringing this up about the original plan of constructing this building and the type of systems that we put in at that time. Would you like that answer right now, Madam Chair?
It could be in a, in a board memo.
Sure, why don't you do that?
In a board memo, or do you want him to answer it?
Just have him to answer it.
Okay, hot water.
Okay, can you answer it?
Most efficient.
Yeah. Um, we just had a engineering firm help us do an assessment of what the hot water issues over there are, and got the results this morning. Long story short, the boilers are undersized for the facility. The hot water production system is undersized for the hot water needs that the showers especially need, and there's an issue with the temperature gradient, or the pressure gradients that happen on both sides of the mixing valve when there's high demand. So, um, the fix is to put new boilers in there and put new hot water system. Um, we think, um, looking at it initially, that we could rectify the hot water supply and flow issue by putting in a new hot water generation system, possibly this summer, when we get a break in August, when they're closed for a week. Um, and, but we'll still have to program a boiler replacement for the rest of the heating system in the building. In the meantime, right now, um, to help the situation as best we can, we're raising the, um, temperature from the hot water heaters, so we've got more higher temp hot water available. And we'll also be looking at installing, uh, uh, new showerheads with a lower flow rate to keep some of that demand down.
Okay.
But it's, it's gonna take some engineering effort and some financial support to get that right.
So, is this gonna be something we see coming before us for?
Well, if I may respond to that.
Facility.
I don't even know yet.
Okay.
So, we can't answer that. I can't answer that question, because we, this was just brought to my attention.
Okay.
Actually, I don't know, about 4:30, so, um, I, you know, I don't really, I don't know, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Bill, see where that's coming from, but, but it's good. I'll put in my board memo.
Well, okay. Thank you very much for addressing it.
Trustee Milligan.
What percent of the useful life of the components you'll be replacing has been expended?
What do you know then?
Building's maybe 10 years old, my understanding. Half or less than half of the useful life.
Thank you. Just, not me, if I could, I just, one of the reasons why we're really starting to feel in a more prevalent way, uh, the less a hot walker, is the demand, because we've been working hard the last three years to really increase enrollment. So, so I think the under, the under-capacity boiler system, you're really seeing the, the impacts of that at peak demand times with peak enrollment at the fit, the fitness center, so.
Okay. Well, um, need a, um, need to finish out tab C, the recommendation to receive the financial reports.
I move we accept the financial report. Scored?
Support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Go to tab D, facilities. Vice President Allen?
Right. Um, presenting the facilities development report, the construction load continues to be high and fast-moving. Um, of all the projects on the, the list that we provided updates for, I'd like to call out a, a couple items of interest. Um, for the advanced transportation center project, we had a teleconference with the state of Michigan last week, where they gave us initial feedback on our schematic design submission, and the results were very good. They were complimentary, said this is an extremely good package, and they gave us a number of very small administrative changes to make before the, the final version is considered on, at the legislative level. So, um, that is going well, and we'll have that to them this week. Um, our project in the business education building is on track. The second floor is completing soon, or this week, and then, we will begin, um, the project to do the same fan terminal unit and piping replacement work on the first floor and get that building completely done. And then, uh, on April 30th, we'll be closing the parking structure entirely for about a month and a half worth of, uh, work to do some waterproofing and joint replacement work in that structure, and opening that again by June 15.
Um, just, I've got a question. First of all, um, are there any questions from the board? I just want to ask a question.
Sure.
When is the, uh, the non-mortarized pathway, when is that gonna start, do you know?
We're not sure yet right now. We're, um, working with MDOT and the Wayne, or the Washington County Road Commission to settle some questions about the easement that's needed and the maintenance agreement.
Okay, great. I'm gonna ask that question a lot.
I'll keep answering then.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go down to remarks, remarks of the board. Yes.
I was, I was invited yesterday to speak to the London, Ontario Board of Realtors, and, uh, I did a PowerPoint presentation, uh, and they wanted to hear about the Gordy Howe International Bridge, which I talked to them about. And I did the American Center for Mobility, and I talked about Washington Community College developing curricula to feed the jobs that we think will be spawned there. And, uh, from 450 Canadians, got a lot of approval and, and good interest on that, so, we all spread our name internationally.
Thank you, that's great. Thank you so much for doing it. Okay.
Your man, Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to acknowledge the passing of Dawn Procosini, who, um, the, the wife of former trustee Tony Procosini, one of, uh, the, you know, founding board members of this institution. And Dawn was, uh, uh, one of the staunchest supporters of this college that I've ever met, and obviously, uh, beloved wife of, of Tony. And, uh, I'd like us to have a moment of silence for her, if we might. Thank you very much.
Great couple. Thank you for making mention of that.
That's right. I was gonna say that, too. Any others? Yes.
Um, I just want.
Just one second, yeah.
I'm just. Her service will be on May 20th?
May 20th.
Yes, on Sunday at 3 o'clock here at the Morrison Law Center.
Okay, great, wonderful.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to thank Kim Herds and Linda Blakely and Clarence Jennings for my makeup class this week, because I missed the retreat, and I think we had a good time talking about student retention and success, and I probably asked more questions in the smaller venue than I would have at the larger venue. They know full well that I'm not particularly fond of systems and, um, computer systems for getting jobs done, but I am looking forward to personnel recommendations to help get that job done. Um, and my second comment is that I'm beginning to be fairly concerned, um, nationwide or worldwide with bottled water. And I know there's some student groups working on it, too, but I'd like very much to work on, um, getting water filling stations, giving all our entering students a, a water bottle, and getting them out of the machines and so forth, because it's, it's really quite a scourge, um, on the earth, this plastic water bottle, and taking, Nestle taking all our water in Michigan. So, I'd just like to, I'll be bringing it up more and more.
I'm sorry to be an exhibit in your marks, Ruth, but.
No, I'm sorry.
I want you to know that when I travel, I carry my own bottle, and at the airport, there are places.
There are, absolutely.
It really is a practical solution.
It is. We need to do that in our water phones, yeah, that's right.
And, and that's a very, that's a very good point to bring up, because, uh, some countries are, have already banned, um, plastic, and I think the United States needs to take that lead.
Well, would the board like me to look into that?
Yes.
If you could, please. Would you like?
I'm in favor.
And I know that there's a student environmental group that's already working. There's a wonderful film that we maybe should watch called Tapped, uh, about bottled water in the United States.
Well, we used to have pitchers of water on our, on our, I think, at, at our board meetings.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Now, look, look at what's happening. We've got all these.
Washington Community College water bottles, good marketing tool.
That's true.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I just, oh, yes. Someone else?
Well, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I do want to add, the focus of the Earth Day that just, we had this two days ago, April 22nd, this year was plastics. And I think, um, which, um, Ruth brings up is right along those lines, is anything we could do this year in honor of Earth Day, and go, going forward to reduce plastic consumption would be a very positive thing.
All right, thank you. I just wanna, if. I don't want to steal the thunder from the president here, but, um, last Thursday, um, the president, myself, and Stephanie Comey, and, um, the culinary department, Derek Andrews, Anders Jr., and, and the students, and, um, Eve, are you here?
Eva.
Eva? Eva? And, uh, Vice President Hearns, and a few other people were up in Lansing at the Capitol, because this year was our, our time to present our culinary skills. Every year, different community colleges that has a culinary department go to Lansing and distribute, well, pay, excuse me, not distribute, but show off their skills in, in their cooking, and present it to the senators and other guests that are there. This was our year. I can say without a doubt, I'm just gonna, excuse me, Eva, if I don't, I don't want to rain on your parade either, but it was outstanding. There was no one that did not pass and stop and say how much. The food was delicious. People were texting people, they're going back into their offices with their food, and people were like literally running down, getting in line to get the food. and people were like literally running down, getting in line to get the food. There was such a variety. And I read yesterday, the board members give this too, a weekly letter from our president of Michigan Community College Association, Mike Hanson, and the first thing he had in the block, he said, "Congratulations to Washington Community College on a wonderful, outstanding job that they did at the Capitol last week." To me, this goes out everywhere. So to me, this was just a feather in our cap, and my kudos to you and your staff and everyone who put this on. So I'm going to let you talk, Eva.
You gave way on my thunder there.
I'm sorry.
I'll try to elaborate.
Say it again.
Stephanie.
So we were, we were invited to, up to the Capitol, and Chef Anders and Chef Triano and I went up to the Capitol building about a month ago just to look at the space. There were some restrictions that we had to work around. We had no running water, very little electricity. The largest elevator that we could use was only 32 inches, and the sun of the Capitol floor was blast, which we could not roll any equipment on. So we really had to strategize on how we were going to make this work and how we were going to make successful. We had a meeting with all of the culinary faculty, the full-time and the part-time. I brought in the OPTs, I brought in my coordinator, and we really just thought this event out. We had drawings up on a whiteboard about how we were going to lay this out, what kind of linens we wanted. We wanted to make the menu Michigan-based. So we really worked as a team, all of us, and it was, it was cool to kind of see this all come together. The day of the event, we brought students up there, so we had our front-of-the-house students as well as our chefs working the floor. For desserts, we had 1,200 desserts. We had an action station, which was the first time this had ever been done, in which they were making food on the spot for guests that were coming in. We also had a signature mocktail that was created, which no other school had done. We had cold foods, hot foods, just a wonderful variety. We had bamboo plates that we gave to guests. They were all impressed with the plates. We had beautiful table settings. We brought fresh flowers. We set all the tables. We had little containers for pan wipes and salt and pepper. I mean, there was just, attention to detail was just in with this event. And the culinary faculty were beaming, beaming at the end. They were dog tired. They were at the college until 11 o'clock the night before preparing, but after the event, you could just tell their hard work. And the students were just thrilled with the outcome. So we were really happy that we could participate, and this is really a good kudo for them.
Do we have photos? Do we have pictures here?
Yeah, they're actually in.
In my comments?
Yeah, there's our.
Oh, okay.
It was phenomenal.
It was, and one thing you didn't mention, that you said they were here till 11 o'clock the night before, but they had to be back at, here at the school at 5:30 in the morning.
Yeah.
So that.
We did have Dean Tucker's department supply the truck and the trailer, and providing, someone needed to drive it up there for us, so we had the trailer that was all the Washington logo and everything outside of the Capitol building, which was very cool.
Right.
Students just loved it. So this is the group of the students here, so they're students from the culinary program as well as baking and pastry arts. And then you can see this is the action station in the right picture, so you see that they have the pan and they're heating up the food right there. There were so many people, the line was just out the door. People were coming back for seconds. The food was amazing.
It was, there aren't words to explain. There really aren't words to explain.
You had to be there to see it.
It was, you know, I think it's kind of like the Washington way.
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of, it's the Washington way.
We even brought a couple of the tables. We didn't want to just have traditional square tables. So we brought tables from the campus that are serpentine tables.
Yes.
So they're kind of like half-round. They kind of add some interest.
Right.
So I mean, it really, I mean, everybody said that the attention to detail was amazing.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I don't want to say anymore because there's more I can say, but I'm going to let the president talk.
No, I think Eva's probably summarized. I'm, I was speechless. And great, like, there had to be, what, maybe two, 250 people?
Easy.
At King.
Oh, Eva, yeah, easy.
Yeah.
One of the things too, you talk about attention to detail, they brought cards, stand-up cards, I guess, postcards?
Student success stories.
Student success stories. And they had them on the round tables so that when people went to the tables, the stand-up round tables, they were sitting there, and they were able to read those while they're eating their lunch. They were able to read the postcards, and it was so interesting, and there must have been like four or five round tables that had these student success stories on there. And then there was, in the hallway, there was a big poster of Washington Community College. And one other thing too, there's a story behind, Sharon is the one with the hat on, cooking. Well, Derek Anders told me that there's a dish, I don't know if he made it up or not, but in any case, he took, first of, let me back up, every dish was from Michigan-owned products. And this big poster was the picture of the mint, and it pinpointed where these products came from. And he also told Rose and I that he made, he took white beans, pureed those, and then made it into like a pancake batter, and that's what Sharon is doing there. I ate one, and you would not know it was not a regular pancake. It was from white beans. It was so good. And then they wrapped it, they put meat inside, ground, not beef, it was beef.
It was a raised beef.
Raised beef and wrapped it around like a, it was, I mean, it was just amazing. It was just amazing. And then one more thing, they had three, four drinks. Three of them were like cocktails, but they weren't cocktails. One of them was just.
Mocktails.
One of them was just a smash hit, and it was called the Michigan Mule. And you have to tell them what that is made of.
It has like burners in it and cherry puree, and I forget, there's four different ingredients, like a spritz of water.
Spritz of water, right.
And then they candied, they candied fruit to be like the garnish on it, and it had a little bit of tartness in the fruit, so it would kind of counteract the sweetness of the drink. It was delicious.
It was.
And then they, the rim on the.
And more sugar.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Wow.
It, I mean, it was just outstanding.
It really was, and desserts, everyone couldn't, they kept going back and getting more and more desserts. It was so, so much desserts there. It was just outstanding. I, I don't know what else to say about that.
And then the one thing I want to point out too is that we made sure that we had vegan and gluten-free foods. We had some vegetarian foods, so we wanted to make sure that we had something for everyone.
Yes, very good. Okay, I'm through.
So you're traveling again where?
I think you want to rest. I think you're, you're kind of tired.
Well, they were all professional.
They were very.
There was a young man, I didn't have my pin on, I didn't have my bad, name badge or anything, and I was sitting at a table eating. And there were some, two other people from, one was from a mock community college, another was a lady from the Department of Transportation, and it was the three of us sitting there. So he came up to the end of the table, and he asked, he says, "How was your food?" And we said, "Okay, it was really good." He said, "Is there anything else you would like?" I mean, just, just so professional. And I was like, "I can't believe this." I mean, it was like you, you were actually at a restaurant. And they had fresh, high-end, and they had fresh flowers on each table. Just, it was just, it was just great.
It's the Washington way.
Yes, it was pretty good. Thank you. Kudos.
Thank you.
To your department and you and everybody else.
That's very good. I'm done. Is it my turn? Yes, your turn. Okay, I'd like to just brief the board very quickly on our Eastern Washington County accomplishments. As you see, there's a photo of Anthony. He's at our Parkridge Center. Washington Community College has a long history of partnerships in Ypsilanti Township and Eastern Washington County. Examples of these partnerships include the WCC's Department of Economic and Community Development manages programming at two community resource buildings in Ypsilanti. Harriet Street Center focuses on workforce development, and Parkridge Community Center focuses on community enrichment. Harriet Street offers employment services like job coaching, resume writing, and interviewing instruction in an effort to help residents with job readiness. The center also supports residents who are trying to get GEDs through WCC's Adult Transitions Pathways Program in order to pursue academic or employment opportunities. At Parkridge, WCC offers after-school programming for children ages five, kids, five to 18 in the late afternoon and evening, as well as adult and senior classes like sewing and line dancing during the daytime. WCC also partners with the Washington Intermediate School District to offer free GED classes and ESL classes at Ypsilanti Township Community Center through the Adult Transition Pathways Program as well. The college distributes bus tokens to students in need since many of the people who take the GED and ESL classes are low-income and experience transportation barriers. At Ypsilanti High School, WCC has increased dual enrollment to 87 students in winter 2018 from 21 students in winter 2017. Does that make sense? WCC will also place an academic advisor on-site at Ypsilanti High School to provide career exploration opportunities for students and parents and families. Through our Campus Explorer Initiative, we encourage parents to attend with their middle and high school students to see what WCC offers traditional students, as well as opportunities for parents to upskill into higher-paying careers. We will also be providing more summer camp opportunities for children at Parkridge, as well as Ypsilanti County Middle School Willow Run Campus. We will also be providing programming at Parkridge to provide additional academic-based programs for children. Finally, the Adult Transitions Department at Washington Community College is extending its reach with a new adult education project at the Ypsilanti Township Community Center. This is in addition to our adult transition classes on our main campus and at Harriet Street. Adult transition staff develops a personal and academic career plan for each student, and they are taught job readiness skills with financial literacy and connected with employment opportunities. So we're doing quite a bit in Ypsilanti Township in support of our residents in that area, and also in support of our students, our high, our elementary school students and our high school students, while at the same time respecting the fact that we are a community college. And we hope, you know, our goal is to provide as many job opportunities as we can, training for our parents to raise their standard of living as well. So, in honor of Community College Awareness Month, we had a proclamation, again, from Ann Arbor Mayor. There you go, man chair. Ann Arbor Mayor Christopher Taylor proclaimed today, April 24th, is the day the community should celebrate Washington Community College for its outstanding contributions to the community. We are very grateful to Mayor Taylor and the city of Ann Arbor for this honor and recognition. I'd also like to thank all the faculty, staff, and administration, and our board of trustees for making this college truly such a valued institution. Students in the WCC Digital Media Arts Department will be showcasing their portfolios to prospective employers and the public at the annual Digital Media Arts Gala this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00 in the Morris Lawrence Building. So please, I would encourage you to attend. Student, it's phenomenal. Students work, student works will represent the fields of 3D animation, digital video, graphic design, and photography. Creative design, marketing, and fine arts industry experts will evaluate and critique the students' portfolios prior to the public showing. This interaction gives students constructive feedback as well as advice for successful transition into the workplace. Again, thank you to the faculty of the Digital Arts Media Department for their high caliber of instruction and the support they provide our students. And it just keeps getting better. The Michigan Chapter of National Academy of Television, Arts, and Sciences Student Production Awards. For the first time, WCC will host the 2018 High School and College University Production Awards at Townsley Auditorium on Sunday, April 29. Michigan Chapter of the National Academy of Television, Arts, and Sciences sponsors the awards. Twelve WCC Digital Media Arts students' projects have been nominated for the awards, and they will be competing, as they always have, against colleges and universities throughout Michigan. We've had 19 winners over the past six years. Thank you also to the faculty and staff that assisted us in participating in Professionals in the Classroom Event. This is an outstanding event where, excellent example of partnering with our community, where we invite members of business and industry to come in and meet with our students and explain a little bit about their professions. We had people here from engineering, nursing, computer programming, business administration, and physical therapy. And don't forget about Thursday, the president's recognition luncheon is this Thursday. And it's an opportunity for me to recognize you as board members, as well as to recommend, recognize leaders of our foundation, our executive board, and all that they do, as well as to acknowledge the leadership of our whole county and the support that they provide Washington Community College. This is an outstanding college, and we could not do it without the support of our leadership team in this county. Doug Rothwell, the president and CEO of Business Leaders for Michigan, is our keynote speaker, and he will focus on the new mobility economy. You know about the Smart Cities Symposium? I think that was in your board memo. So I won't go over it, but 140 people from, over 140 states, not 140 states, 140 people were there. 140 states, can you remember that? People from, over 140 individuals came from all of the United States. It was outstanding. You'll see it on the cover of our On the Record, and Fox Two covered the event. Free College Day was April 7th, another great day. Again, thank you. None of this is possible without faculty and staff and student participation. We had 37 sessions, Free College Day, and we received 1,337 session reservations from 591 individuals. So it was a great opportunity for people to attend, and nearly 48% of the attendees were first-time registrants. Brandon, Dean Tucker, gave our first speakers bureau speech. You know, we have a speakers bureau now. So that organizations, or PTAs, or teachers, or anyone in the community that would like to have a speaker can, can contact the college, and we will provide a content speaker. I'm sure David Wooten would be a real popular one. But Brandon, our dean, Brandon Tucker, was, was our first speaker, and I want to thank you so much, Brandon. He talked about, he spoke about the role higher education plays in closing the skills gap and the importance of collaboration between business and industry.
He didn't do any preaching?
No, but.
Maybe a little.
Great. And the Washington Economic Club Luncheon is May 15th, so please mark your calendars. It's going to be on cybersecurity. And don't forget about commencement, May 19th, which is a great event that we all look forward to. Thank you for, thank you for all you do, and appreciate your support and advice. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going down to old business and honorary associate degree recipients. Vice President Hearns, tab E.
That is Blakey.
It has Hearns here, but okay.
Congratulations. On the honorary associate degree?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like we're giving the honorary associate degree.
I can take care of it. You want me to do it? Okay, go ahead.
To Pastor George W. Waddles Jr. for his extraordinary support of Washington Community College and its students, and for leading a life of service that has benefited our entire community.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was based on your recommendation?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to. Okay, we're going to...
I think you have to remove.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move to grant an honorary degree to Pastor George Waddles Jr.
In...
Second.
Second, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm so excited. We're going to Frank. Okay. We're going to Tab F, and that's Resolution to Utilize Maximum Allowable 2018-19 Ad Valarium Tax Rate. Vice President Johnson.
This is the motion for the Board to give the college instruction on whether or not we ought to assume when preparing next year's budget, the maximum allowable and interim rate. Since our last meeting to this meeting, I've updated the rate and the result in revenues based upon the approved headly adjustment that came out from the county last week. So there was a change, but it was that change to reflect the actual rate that you'll see in a further motion later on as a first reading, that we would ask you then to approve the rate at the next meeting. This is just to give us instructions to assume the maximum rate when preparing our budget.
Okay, your recommendation is that the Board of Trustees recommends that the college, when developing its fiscal year 2019 budget, utilize a maximum allowable 2018-2019 ad valarium rate for operations, which at its current rate of 3.3978 mils would generate approximately $55,628,334 of gross tax revenue. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Yes.
Vice President Johnson, I just want to, in recognition of the speaker that spoke during public speaking time and realizing, especially for people on limited incomes, frequently retirement incomes, in our county community, the difficulty they face with taxes and their tax burdens. It's my understanding that this is what we've done, and what we did last year was we put it forward, asking for the maximum.
Yes, that is correct. And then headly, which passed in the 1980s, usually rolls that back, taking into account the requirement that people's tax burdens can't go, can't exceed whatever the rate of inflation is. And that's something that I've supported back in the 1980s, even as a progressive, because it would preserve the capability of people on limited incomes and low incomes to remain in their communities, frequently where they had raised their children and their families, and prevent them from being priced out of their houses by accelerating tax assessments. So I'm going to support this, and I want to recognize the woman that spoke tonight at public speaking, and I think this is in line with what we've done in the past and is very respectful of the taxpayer citizens in our community, and at the same time recognizes that we need, that the community has voted us this money, and we use it wisely and deliver a tremendous educational benefit to the entire county community. I'll gladly be supporting this.
Any other discussion?
Vice Chairman Nagorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Nagorn?
Yes.
Professor Malkin?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Gafford?
Yes.
Trustee Gafford?
Yes.
Trustee Lea?
Yes.
Thank you.
This one? Retention?
Right, that's the software, it's on page three of four. Instead of going through the...
Just go to the recommendation. Right. Yeah? Okay. Speaker Johnson? Okay, we're, this is the retention and recruitment software contract, Vice President Johnson, and...
Last month, we had a presentation and discussion, so I'm suggesting if the Board approves of this suggestion, that we go right to the recommendation.
Page, page three and four.
President, thank you. As a result of the discussion and direction from the Board at our prior meeting, I have revised the recommendation to include the proviso that before, if the Board would approve this contract, which is a three-year contract with renewal options, that before exercising the initial renewal option, that we would come back to the Board and present results related to the performance of utilization of the CRM tool.
Any questions? Yes.
I noticed that, and I'm really thankful that you did that. Yet, I would still ask that we be asked again for approval of the renewal, not just that you present the results to us, but upon the presentation, hopefully the presentation will be convincing, that we have an opportunity again to approve the renewal option. So that's something that I would like to add, if it's acceptable to the administration and to others on the Board. Just a simple sentence at the end of this recommendation that says, "Renewal will require a vote of approval by the Board of Trustees." Simple sentence, and I'm confident that if the software demonstrates its abilities and we have good results, that we'll be happy to grant the approval.
My only concern is, does that change? I mean, the pricing probably will change, because if you're not giving them the renewal option, if I were them, I would increase the price. So I mean, it's a material term of the contract that you're asking to change. And generally, when these multi-year contracts, my experience is that people price in, if they know it's going to be renewed, then they can, you know, they know they're going to be able to amortize their investment over time. But if you're suggesting to them that they need to, I mean, Vice President Johnson, am I correct in that?
No, you're correct.
I don't.
In this case, we only ask for three-year pricing for it. And so I would think that it would be acceptable with this amendment in this case, just because it was for three-years pricing.
Okay, then I'm fine with it.
Well, does it change what we're to do tonight?
I'd like to add the sentence, it's a simple sentence, and I can give it to Vanessa.
Could you say it again?
Sure. The last sentence, "Renewal will require a vote of approval by the Board of Trustees." So that's, you know, it's a simple thing, so we'll...
Actually, I can make it even easier. "Before exercising the initial renewal option, which must be approved by the Board of Trustees," comma, you see the insert?
Where?
In the last sentence, "Before exercising the initial renewal option, comma, which will require the approval of the College Board of Trustees, comma, college administration will present to the Board of Trustees, blah, 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 blah."
That's fine with me.
You just have to add one, okay?
Is that...
So I would propose an amendment to the recommendation, that it be amended to read, "Before exercising the initial renewal option, comma, which will require approval by the Board of Trustees, comma," and then the rest of the sentence reads the same. And I would move that the recommendation has amended, be amended as in that fashion. Is there support?
It's been supported.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Opposed?
So did we vote on just the amendment or on the whole thing?
You'll vote on, the roll call will be on the amended, amended item.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes. Vice Chairman Nagorn?
Yes.
Professor Malkin?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Gafford?
Yes.
Trustee Gafford?
Yes.
Trustee Lea?
Yes.
Okay. So now we've moved to the... Now, we're going to vote on retention recruitment software contract.
That was it?
Yes.
Yep, that was it.
Okay.
Now we get to the fun part.
Oh, yes. All right, we're going to Tab H, and that is the approval of candidates for graduation. The Board approved the candidates for graduation, assented.
In your packet, you have, we have, in your packet, 1,591 graduates...
Wow.
...who have earned 965 certificates and 1,174 associate degrees.
Wow. How many associate degrees? Is this an increase from last year?
1,174.
Is this an increase from last year?
It's a 13% increase, I knew you'd ask that, 13% increase in certificates, and a 1% increase in graduates, and just a slight decline, 2% decline in our degrees, but 13% increase in our certificates.
That's fabulous.
That's great. That's very good. All right, is there a motion? Yes.
I have a question, after the motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, discussion.
After the presentation about success and so forth, this is success right here.
Correct.
Is there any way, perhaps with this new CRM thing we just bought, to go backwards with these people, to see how many of them were first-time college students, to see how many of them were here for two years, or three years, or four years? In terms of those retention markers that we were using for new students, can we go backwards with these successful students to see exactly?
That's a good idea. Yes. Okay. Hello?
Just all in favor.
Anyone else have anything to say?
This is new business, we're not voting out it tonight, right?
No. Yes.
I have to say, it's all in favor.
Yeah, because we have three weeks to go.
I don't think anybody's going to say no to graduating people.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Discussion and all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Opposed? Thank you. Oh, now, this is the fun part, we're going to go to I.
Well, that's your fun part.
That's my fun part, yeah. This is the discussion, application for liquor licenses for dates, ironworkers' summer conference. Let's see, make application to Liquor Control Commission for a special license for the sell either beer and wine, or beer, wine, and spirits for consumption on premises of Washtenaw Community College, and with all adequate precautions to be in effect on the following days, July 14th, July 17th, July 18th, and July 19th, 2018. Do I hear?
I think this is just discussion.
This is discussion, all right, discussion.
Is this more days than last year?
I don't think so.
No, same number of days? Because I thought we were maybe, okay.
One, two, three, four, yeah.
Are we invited?
Of course.
Okay, good.
This is, I mean, we approved this last year, and I'm fine with approving it this year. Is there any, would it be helpful to expedite it? I don't know what the process is for moving the paperwork forward and getting the liquor license in place for the ironworkers.
I'd be happy for you to...
Does it help the ironworkers if we do that?
It just moves things along for us in terms of being able to get the paperwork processed.
Then I would, I would move this, unless there is any opposition, I would move this for approval tonight.
Support.
We moved and supported. Anything else?
Do we need a roll call vote then?
No.
No, because there's no money involved. So we just go ahead and...
Just a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good. Thank you, Tristan. Trustee Gafford?
Now, Ruth, it may be a cash bar, so...
Yeah, I'm wondering. All I got last year was a T-shirt, so maybe a beer this year.
We're going to go down to Tab K. Oh, J.
Okay, topic for discussion is the Energy Center Pump Replacement Mechanical Contract. This project would replace the three primary and three secondary pumps that currently move hot water through our boiler system and out to five buildings on campus. The pumps are original to the building from 1999 and are currently in a state of disrepair. They leak heavily and are not economical. This project will also include the associated piping, valves, and controls to be, to make the pumps work properly, as well as install variable frequency drive controllers for the pumps, which will result in further energy savings. On February 20th, we received ten bids for this project, and the base bid included in the contract would be for $374,900 from John Darr Mechanical of Ann Arbor.
Question I'm going to ask right now, have we used them before in the past for mechanical work?
I believe we have.
I think we have, I'm just trying to remember that. Okay, I'm fine.
Any other questions? Yes, well, Tristan.
Do we have $374,900 for this?
This was part of our deferred maintenance.
Yes, to Bernie.
I've got a question, that John Darr Mechanical is, all the prices are in the mechanical category A, and that's, if we give them the bid for that amount, are we not doing the electrical, or do we also need to award a contract for the electrical work? I see some of the bidders are just bidding the electrical and not the mechanical.
Right, that price is for the whole job.
So they did, they're including the electrical in with the mechanical?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. So we go down to Tab K, Council Bar Call, and Resolution to Participate in IT Clemens Agreement.
Clemens stands for Courts and Law Enforcement Management Information System. Clemens is the most widely-used law enforcement, record-keeping, and report-management consortium in southeast Michigan. The system was originally started and is currently maintained by Oakland County. There are over 100 law enforcement agencies participating in Clemens currently, including Ann Arbor Police and Fire, Washtenaw County Sheriff, EMU Public Safety, Oakland University Public Safety Department, U of M's Public Safety, School Crafts, and Ypsilanti Police and Fire. Joining Clemens requires the governing board of a public agency, and this is only among public agencies, to grant authority to the administration to sign a five-year inter-local agreement. That's why this is being brought to you. It's not based on the cost, but based on the fact that this entity, this consortium requires a public board to grant the administration authority to sign.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Is there a cost?
Yes.
Yes, the annual cost is approximately $9,000, and then there'll be a setup fee that'll cost between $11,000 and $22, depending on our hardware structure.
At the beginning?
Yes, just for the install.
I'm very well familiar with Clemens, but who is going to be the lead person in being able to access this system?
That'll be Chief Hilden.
I'm sorry?
Chief Hilden.
Okay, okay.
He'll be the lead on Clemens.
And he's going to be the only one?
No, the other officers would access Clemens as well.
When you say others, how many others?
The four police officers.
Okay.
The four, see, the college, the campus resource officers.
I understand that, but from what my background experiences, that they really, from what I have been told and know of, is that Clemens doesn't like a lot of people being on it.
Well, they'll be, they'll be able to access Clemens because it's a report-writing system, so they'll be able to submit reports. But then Chief Hilden would make the final decision on submitting it after it's all finalized and reviewed. But they can still access it as a report tool.
So he's the approver then?
A tool, right.
The approver.
Right, he'll be the ultimate approver in terms of going, before it's submit, the final report, any reports would be submitted, but there's a, it's a reporting tool, so it allows, you know, and as we're doing incidents, it allows us to do the reporting. It also keeps track of all dispatch calls as well.
Okay, okay, all right. I just wanted some clarifications on that. Yes, Tristan?
Will we get some sort of summary from that?
Yes.
As a board?
Yes, and the other thing that's nice about this is it'll assist with clear reporting. So now we are dependent... So now we are dependent on other agencies around who are bordering us to provide the Cleary stats. We'll be able to just put the parameters in, the coordinates, and get our, all the Cleary data that we need.
And then, once a year or whatever?
Yes.
They'll get a report to us?
Yes.
Yes, Devarti.
So, I'm not familiar with this really, so in addition to reporting, so when we have incidents on campus, we put a report into the system, which is that accessible to all other law enforcement agencies that are participants.
Correct.
We can also access information about individuals?
Correct.
So could, can we, does that give us the capacity to, like, look at a student who's on our campus, enrolled in a class, and to see if there are any reports in the Clemis system on that person?
Yes, if we have access to Clemis, yes.
Only if the person is in doing something unlawful.
Right.
They just can't put their name in.
In other words, as a teacher, I can't put all my students in there to see?
Correct.
Who's gonna shoot me and who isn't?
No, you can't.
So if?
It's not something, excuse me, I just want to, from what I know of, and maybe you know too, Larry.
But we, but if we had, you know, if we had concerns, if we had incident report on campus or we had.
Right.
Individuals that we had concerns about, we would be able to look into Clemis and see if there was, if there had been any other activity with.
Okay, is this the kind of thing that if, let's say, one of our officers with arrest powers sees somebody run a stop sign on campus, pulls them over, can they access the, can they access through Clemis and once they have the person's driver's license to see if there's any outstanding incident reports involving this person who just ran a stop sign?
They would have the option to do that, yes.
Or if they had a taillight out, they could pull them over for a taillight out in the evening and access through Clemis to see if there's any outstanding reports on the person.
Yes, but we don't pull people over for taillights out.
Hopefully not, but I know that there have been cases in other parts of the country. So I'm thinking of Sandra Bland in particular, who was pulled over for a failure to signal and ended up dead in a cell in a law enforcement facility in Texas, and it's my fear that, well, these are the kinds of things that are, give me pause about the entire thing of engaging into a policing system, but, so I'm, I know this is for discussion tonight. I will try to talk to a couple people I know at the sheriff's department and ask them what their experience is.
I mean, one thing I'm not entirely clear about, I mean, this is, I mean, patrol officers, the police department has access to lean data.
And Clemis gives us access to lean.
Clemis gives you access to lean.
Correct.
Yeah, we have a police department now.
Right.
I think, I just want to say this, if you don't mind, trustee Hatcher. This is a system that cannot be just used willy-nilly. They monitor it very closely, so like you mentioned, that scenario of a taillight being out or something, that's something that unless the officer feels that this person, or they had a BOLO out, or there's something going on with this person, that's really the only reason why they would need to get into that system, because of suspicion activities or their behavior, not just something, well, I'm gonna stop them because their taillight is out. That's not really what the purpose of this is, because you don't want it to be misused, and if it is, it has been noted even from our own sheriff's department of people misusing it because they didn't do the appropriate protocol, and I do know that. Yes?
We have two sort of oversight committees regarding this, and it was my understanding that they were gonna come up with guidelines and expectations so that something like a taillight would not generate contact to Clemis. I mean, do we have guidelines?
Right, so in terms of traffic limits, now, if we had, like, reckless driving and someone got hurt?
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, is this written down? Do we have some guidelines and procedures in place for, for the people who'll be using this on our campus, for what we want here?
That would come from Scott Hilden and from that area, because he's, he, we were novices.
Well, he has it, but there are two college-wide committees looking into that sort of thing.
Right, and that's something.
And I just wonder where we are in terms of developing those guidelines, that's all.
Right, so we're in the process of drafting those guidelines.
Yeah, so that might be something to take into consideration when you're doing that.
Correct.
Right. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, thank you. We are going down to tab L, and this is another discussion, recommendations for new programs 2018-19, and that is.
Vice President Holmes.
Yes, yes, so we talked earlier about a big success in the culinary program, and they've been really, really busy this past semester making changes and adjustments to their programs, making sure that they are a lot more responsive to industry needs, and making sure students are coming to the program and being able to be employed. So what you have in front of you are actually two essentials, skill-based programs. One is culinary essentials and the other is baking and pastry essentials, and what they did in both of these programs is made them more focused on skills, focus courses for employment, and they do actually nest or stack with some of our larger certificates as well as our associate degrees. So you'll see both of those programs there for the fall as well as multiple three-plus-one articulation agreements. We've continued to work on the number of articulation agreements we have. It's even nicer when we have a lot of the three-plus-one, so you'll notice that the one, the first, the first one on page three is one from Cleary, which again dovetails to the work that's been done in the culinary program, as well as some more three-plus-one agreements with Eastern Michigan in early childhood education, and then two on the back, or two on page four with Madonna University, a relationship that we're continuing to build different programs in that relationship with Madonna University. Any questions?
Do you have a sense of how many students this will affect?
The color, the three-plus-ones?
Yeah, the three-plus-ones.
The three-plus-ones. It's hard to say, one of the big things that we have been looking at within our retention work that we've been doing is that we don't have as many students as we should have who take advantage of the three-plus-one programs, so one of the key initiatives that we even talked about last week is better communication about our transfer agreements, because the number of students who take advantage of a lot of the three-plus-ones are, it is, it's low, it's lower than what we think it should be. Most of the ones with Eastern are more subscribed than others, but even to get a student fully to a three-plus-one versus maybe a sixty-hour associate's degree, a lot of times it is a stretch, so I can't really say how many it will impact. Our goal is for it to impact more students, and we know we need to do more communication around those.
Because it really looks good.
It is, it's a lot of savings for the students.
Right, but, yeah, only if you take advantage of it.
We have some more communication work to do in that area.
Any questions, discussion?
I just wanted to say, I'm really pleased to see the articulation agreements with these universities outside of Eastern. I really am.
Joy Garrett has been working a lot more aggressively with diversifying the options that we have with other institutions besides Eastern, they're still a key partner, because we are starting to see more students transfer to other institutions across the state, so, and a lot of institutions, I think, are recognizing the quality of our students, and they're, in more cases, now communicating with us with an interest to do more partnerships with us, so a lot of the articulation work has gotten a lot easier because universities are making outreach to us directly.
That is just great. Thank you very much. Yes?
A related question, how many STEM scholars do we have?
Was it twenty?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-some?
Twenty-eight thirty.
Twenty-eight thirty, but they actually showed up last Friday night for mentoring session, and so we had a good crowd of them, so that's a good sign that they're showing up on a Friday night, our STEM scholars, so they're making a lot of big progress in that area.
That's great. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Okay.
During the monthly meeting? Look to during the monthly meeting.
Yeah, no, I don't understand. All right, I'm gonna do an adjournment of the monthly meeting and move into closed session after the public hearing, and to discuss a materials exempt from disclosure pursuant to section eight H of the Open Meetings Act after the public budget hearing. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved and supported. Vanessa, would you do a roll call, please?
Chair of the Bank Morton?
Yes.
You don't need a roll call for this.
Oh, don't bother.
Oh, you do for this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Devarti?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
The public hearing is now open. The board will now hear comments. If anyone is here to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and limit comments to three minutes. Well, we would like to hear from Vice President Johnson on the budget.
Very good, thank you all. You should have in your packets this evening, four documents related to the budget. You have a draft motion for the budget, the one, the one-pager, and then behind that would be a variance analysis from the current-year forecast to next year's budget by each of the line items that are represented on the motion itself with the salient, you know, the explanations for each of those variances. Behind that, you have a very detailed report, which reflects department by department, the personnel and non-personnel cost budget this year compared to budget next year, and then a variance both for personnel and for non-personnel area by area, and we provide both the second and the third documents for your analysis and reading pleasure that comes with that. And what I thought I would do tonight would be to go through the fourth document that's in your package, which is a presentation that summarizes the budget for this year, and then feel free to please ask questions along the way or after the way as it relates to it. You know, the process, we had gone through the process during the retreat, but I just wanna kind of walk back through once again with the board that our budget process, although it starts in the latter part of December and concludes with the recommendation tonight, but really, we, it's ongoing. Each quarter, we meet Barb, Barb Villenger, the director for budgeting, and I meet with all the department leads, their leadership teams, each and every quarter, and those have been very good meetings. There's a lot of good questions, and our goal is to help everyone across campus to understand the resources that are within their budgets and try to be able to address the best that we can, kind of the current-day contemporary issues that folks are facing as they try to accomplish the goals within their areas, and we have found that's really helped to inform the budgeting process for this year. That led to each of the departments submitting their budgets by February first to their vice presidents, and the vice presidents for those areas then spent the better part of a month to month and a half reviewing in detail the recommendations that had been brought forth. We then asked back from the vice presidents about mid-March, their recommended budgets for their areas. While that's going on, we're aggregating and analyzing and trying to get back out to all the areas, the results of that analysis, as well as trying to develop a revenue budget for the college. And from there, we then bring forth to the president a recommendation for budget. The president then provides her input into it, and there's an iterative process that goes on, and then the last step, which we just completed then, was to send out the proposed final budgets back out to each of the departments for final input, and we've gotten that input, and based upon that input, we have and are pleased to recommend the budget that's before you this evening. Just to remind the board that our budgeting process is informed and guided by the strategic parties of the college. Each and every one of the proposed adjustments from the current-year budget to next year, we're asking folks to think about which of the priorities that this aligns with, and that really helped as we went through trying to reconcile against all the great ideas that folks have and which ones were of the highest priority relative to the strategies for the college. So on slide five of your presentation, you will see that we are, that we're asking the board to approve an increase of revenue from the current-year forecast of about two point six million, and I'll go into more detail about the areas that caused that increase, and then on the cost side, an increase from the current-year forecast of about three, of three point two percent, and that, and that takes into account that in the current year, the board had approved a reallocation of some of our operational budget that wasn't being spent largely because of vacancies and was reallocated down into deferred maintenance and camp spare maintenance, and as part of our process, we largely restore all those budgets back, and then that becomes the starting place for next year for that. So a little bit more detail on that on slide, slide six on revenues, that we go through in detail the areas of variance, and if you note on slide seven, kind of the narrative around that and some of the key assumptions that we've made on the revenue side, and these are consistent with those that we went through during the board retreat itself, is that enrollment, we're basically, we're forecasting enrollment to be flat year-over-year in terms of head-to-head enrollment, but that credit hours will be slightly, slightly down, and once again, the reason why it's slightly, slightly down is that on average, we've seen a persistent trend where students are taking a little less load each and every year, and we largely attribute that to as full employment, that students on average can't take quite as many courses, quite as many credit hours. But for the college, to be able to forecast yet once again that our enrollment's going to be level year-over-year is a significant accomplishment of the college at large, and it really is the strength of this institution and our offerings and the enrollment efforts that's done across the college, faculty and staff, that really has allowed us to be able to, to make, to make that forecast around enrollment. Of course, this also bakes in the tuition rates that the board has already approved, which is that our in-district rates remain flat year-over-year, both for on-campus and for distance learning, and that for out-district, out-state, and international, there's a two, three, and four percent rate increase respectively. This also reflects the increase in the technology fee from seven dollars to ten dollars, which the board had approved, and that, and that added revenue to the college that was able to really help to keep our in-district rates flat year-over-year. Property taxes are forecasted, the revenue to increase about three percent year-over-year, and this is based, based upon the county's certified assessed values for this year. We just got this information last week, so it reflects the increase in assessed values, and as I mentioned before, it also reflects a pretty significant headly adjustment. Point nine nine one six is the headly adjustment off of last, last year's rates. .9916 is the headly adjustment off of last year's rates. So that was a significant decline. But the net-net is a 3% growth in property tax revenues. I would say that one of the wild cards, of course, is state appropriations. That's about 12%, 13% of our budget. And I think that you've all seen the newsletters that have come out. We, of course, the state budget's not been approved. We have three different versions of the funding for community colleges, the governor's recommendation, and the House and Senate. We believe that the 1.5% is within the range of all of those recommendations. We don't have certainty around that and most likely won't have certainty at the time that we ask the board to vote on this at the May meeting. But we think there's very little variance, you know, plus or minus 1 to 200,000 off of that. We're also, we're forecasting that investment income is going to go up once again, and this is because we continue to refine our cash flow modeling, which allows us to really pick up the scraps on all of the idle cash that we have and invest in that short term. And that's on top of long-term investment models which have allowed us to do well. And last but not least, our contract training revenue is forecasted to increase for the third consecutive year in a row. And that really is a reflection of the work that Michelle Mueller, Niko Dawson, and the team have done to really to engage with our community and to get our contracted training offerings kind of aligned to what the community needs. And that's our revenue side.
Any questions? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, I can pause there on the revenue side.
Okay.
Before I move to the expense side.
Any questions so far? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So on the cost side, a little bit more detail on the cost side, not quite as much as the five-paged Excel spreadsheet sheet, but at a functional level, you see all the relevant areas of personnel and non-personnel, equipment, PC investments, debt service, and so on. Really, the story behind that expenditure is seen on Slide 9. We have assumed comp and benefit increases of about 1.6 million, which is made up of three different elements. It's the assumed 1.5% compensation increase as of July 1. It also assumes, of course, the faculty step increases, which are part of their contract with the college, and also assumes a 4% increase in health care costs for that. So that's 1.6 million. Of our budget of 108 million, just to remind the board that retirement costs make up approximately 12% of that budget. So that's 12.7 million. And of the 12.7 million, the lion's share, the majority of it, is MEPs' cost. Most of our employees participate in MEPs. That's in excess of 10 million of that 12.7 million. And the balance is with our defined contribution plan, our ORP plan as it's called. But that's about 12% of our budget. Each and every year, we budget at the department level. So when you see the detailed numbers in the five-page, the assumption is every budget position is filled for the entire year, and those dollars are placed in the department budgets. But at the college level, we have to make an assumption around just vacancies. We don't know where they're going to be. We don't know exactly the pace that those vacancies will occur. But it's something that you hear me speak of each and every month during the finance report. And we've assumed 20 to 25 full-time vacancies, which is consistent with the current year. And we've assumed, however, less for part-time. And the reason is, I mentioned those quarterly meetings, and so folks are realizing that their part-time resources are something that they need to work hard to manage the needs across the departments. And so during this budgeting process, folks were taking part-time savings that they were realizing this year, and next year, they were using that to fund staffing needs that they had. And I really applaud the college for doing that. It's the resources and putting them to the best use to be able to support the goals. So we've assumed less part-time savings. Last year, we had an assumption of 500,000. This year, I've brought it down to 100,000 because I've seen that the college worked hard to try to utilize those dollars to meet their needs within their departments. On the non-personnel side, the main reason for the increase is in addition to inflationary pressures that we face, is there are technology investments. The board had approved the contract with Campus Works. That was worth 800,000 for next year. Now, we were able to offset parts of that. We were able to offset that in part by reorganizing the IT leadership team due to a vacancy. That helped. We also are starting to ramp down as we get close to bringing up our new website. We were able to ramp down the non-personnel costs that are associated with the building of that website. But still, for next year's budget, it's still a net increase for the Campus Works contract. In addition to that, we have budgeted for the new CRM technology that the board approved tonight. And then in addition to that, we have put aside additional monies for student scholarships. An extra 150,000 was put in next year's budget related to student scholarships. And that's really in recognition of the fact that this year, we are forecasting, for probably the first time in a while, that we're going to use 100% of our general fund scholarship budget. And in addition to that, we're forecasting that the foundation is going to be giving out the largest amount of scholarship money. So we're seeing that all the good work to connect our resources with our students' needs is being fully utilized. So it's time to put some more money in our scholarship budget. And I might add that the foundation's doing the same thing, that they continue to challenge themselves to find ways to increase their level of support for that. In addition to that, this budget, if I might remind the board, one of the new elements in our budgeting process this year was to build out a five-year equipment replacement plan. And that worked well. I mean, it really brought forth the best thinking across the campus around their best guess as to how their equipment is going to need to be replaced. And so we're pleased to recommend they were able to make an extra $300,000 investment in equipment related to the instructional area. And that in addition to that, this budget also includes an extra 200,000 going into the newly created furniture fund, to which the board approved at this revised-year budget for the current year. So that's an extra half a million dollars in this budget that we're recommending for next year to go in to support the instructional side, both from equipment in the classroom and to begin to create a multi-year plan to address the furniture needs within the classroom as well. And that's really critical. Now, in addition to that, we also know that our campus continues to age and that the needs for deferred maintenance and camp spare maintenance is ever-present. So this next-year budget steps up, I'm going to call it the normal funding for those two categories of deferred maintenance, camp spare maintenance, up by an additional 750,000. And we believe that we need every dollar of that just to kind of keep pace with the plan that prior VEP facilities, Damon Flowers, had been put in place that I know that Mark Allen will now embrace. And so we really believe that that money needs to be put in the budget. So that's a detailed look at our operating budget from a category, personnel, non-personnel. We also thought it'd be good for the board to see it from a functional area. So on Slide 10, this compares our operating budget this year compared to next year, broken out by functional area. So for instance, if you look at the fiscal '19 adjustments column, we're recommending 4.2 million of increase from the budget the board approved this year to next year's budget for the operational areas. And of that 4.2 million, 1.3 of it is going directly into the instructional side in this budget. 2 million's going into compensation and benefit increases. And then the balance, 700,000 into student services, but about 350,000, or roughly half of that, is just geography. It really relates to the campus resource officer funding. If the board might recall, in you approving the current year budget, you asked us to set aside those monies, to not put it in the campus safety budget until when and if the board had approved that movement. And so that money was sitting down under the institutional initiatives. Since the board has approved it, we have now moved those monies to support that operation up till to working on under the VP Blake and student services. And then the balance of that really goes to support our CRM project and student scholarships for the 700,000. Administrative support of 700,000, it really is what I already had addressed. It's the technology investments in Campus Works. It's the software costs related to the CRM project, and that's offset by the savings that we're able to procure through reorganizing our IT group to help to support that. And then plant operations, there was no increase, but there really was a lot of good work that was done in this budgeting process. And you will see it in your detail. We've reduced the postage budget for the college to bring it down to current levels that we're actually spending. We also reduced our utilities budget by roughly 100,000, and that's to reflect the good work that's been done around energy conservation. And we've taken that 200,000 and we've reinvested that in critical areas within facilities. And those really relate to maintenance, preventative maintenance contracts, that when meeting with each of the teams that they really felt like we needed to add regular routine preventative maintenance at a higher level. So we reallocated that 200,000 that I spoke of in savings through postage and through energy and put it back into other areas within facility ops there. So that's the 4.2 million. Moving on to Slide 11, trustee DeVarty had asked that we also include in this budget presentation a pro forma view of what our balance sheet would look like as a result of this budget. So what I offer is a forecast both for the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, as well as June 30th of '19. And really, three areas that I want to point out to the board in this balance sheet. The first is capital assets net. You will note that for fiscal '17 to '18 to '19, it's actually going down. And it's going down because we have annual depreciation expense of about $6 million a year. We're amortizing the fixed cost of our plant over time, over the useful life. That's 6 million. What this says is that we're not adding new plant investments at the same pace as that annual 6 million depreciation. That's why that's going down a little bit there. Second thing, down under non-current liabilities, other, you will note that that's steadily going down. And that's going down because we continue to pay down our debt. The lion's share of that other non-current is our long-term debt. This year, we paid off one of our two debt issues. It was a debt issue related to the renovation, I think, of our TI building from many, many moons ago. And so what'll be left after this year is just the debt service remaining on the Health and Fitness Center. And that runs through 2027 for that. And then bringing us up just one line up from that area, the net pension liability. This is the mothership. This is where we're going to adopt in fiscal '18, GESB South 75, which is the companion accounting standard to GESB 68, which was pension. This is other post-employment retirement benefits. It's the health care plans that are managed by the state of Michigan. And this year, we have to book a liability upon adoption based upon the estimates we've gotten from the state, which are about a year old, but they just gave them to us here just a couple months ago. It's about $40 million. So we are going to have to book a liability based upon that estimate that we had gotten of another $40 million. And you can see down to the second to the last line under net position for unrestricted, that brings up our net position for unrestricted to an additional negative position of 40 million. The good news is, I think that we will be one of just a few education institutions that's going to have a positive balance sheet. To still have a total net position of roughly 25 million is my forecast at the end of this year is significant. Many, many school systems in the state, if they're not already negative, will go negative in their net position as a result of adopting GESB 75. And then I forecasted for next year, my best guess as to what that impact is going to be. Of course, I'm forecasting a balanced budget for next year, so no net impact to our position other than the impact of pension and post-retirement. When you run our CFI ratios, our composite financial index ratios against this, the college still looks very, very strong. So in summary, really, the work the college has been doing for the last three or four years around our student enrollment, student success, is paramount. That's a third of our budget. For us to be essentially flat in enrollment and credit hours is really a very strong position for the college to be able to fund our ongoing efforts in the instruction side, in the classroom side, in technology for our campus, and deferred maintenance, and comp and benefits for our faculty and staff. Of course, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the strong support that we get from our community. Property tax revenue to be, you know, at almost 53 million for next year is so significant. We are blessed to have that strong, strong support. And it really enables us as an institution to do the good work that we do. Our budgeting process was iterative. We focused on our priorities, a lot of give and take, healthy give and take around things that we can afford and how do we best help our students with that. And so we are pleased to recommend a budget that is a 3.2% increase year-over-year, but balanced and leaves the college in very strong financial position.
Wow. Great, very well stated and detailed. Appreciate that. Are there any questions for the Vice President?
Yes.
There's just a couple areas where I was looking at variances between last year and this year that I have some questions about. And one was the one I asked during the financial report, health sciences. When I'm looking at all the health sciences here, there's dental, nursing, pharmacy, radiography, physical therapy, but there's one category that just says health sciences. Is that general biology? What is that line item? Because that's where most of the personnel increases.
Right.
And it's 1-5-2-9-0 is the organization number.
Dave, could you bring us up?
We have a new designation.
It's on the first page of the detail.
Okay.
And it's on the organization number. It's 1-5-2-9-0. That's the left-hand number.
That's a new department. Yeah, new department. So we have nursing, and we always say nursing and health science and applied health.
Right.
We now have health sciences because applied health is growing so much larger. So we split them off. So there's health sciences. Is the courses like HSC 100, which is a SENA course, nutrition falls under HSC, CPR, courses that are related to health but not SLA program are under HSC. And then allied health is the actual programs that are.
But people, for example, in nursing might take these courses.
Yes, they could.
They're part of their career.
They're part of the career for nursing. Okay.
If I may, just based on the nursing question, are you still talking about that? I just wanted to make a comment.
I just wanted to tell scientists who looked at the catch-all. I didn't know exactly what it is, but that makes, that's a good explanation.
Our strategic initiative is the Center for Health and Nursing and Health.
Right.
So the board was very supportive in our discussions over the last year. And so you can see where we're putting our focus.
Right. I know a lot of these questions are just informational, so I understand the budget a little better. On the second page, I'm looking at, let's look at 2-1-2-3-0, Educational Services, which has a decrease of 160,000, 163,000.
Yep.
I'm wondering what that is.
We actually did transfers, trustee DeVarty. So that's 160,000. And there were actually, were two staff persons that were transferred up. You see just above that in 2-0-9-3-0, the Teaching Support Service of plus 73,000.
Right.
And then you see just above that in 2-0-9-1-0, Curriculum and Assessment for 73,570. So there were two staff people and VP Hearns was doing some reorganization of staff.
Okay. Then another one with a large, I'm looking at things that are over 100,000 differential. Human Social Science Administration Personnel. Is that not the social science instruction but administration? And that's a decrease of, so we're actually 180,000. Was that also a?
We actually had a vacant dean's position from a few years back that had been carried as the organization tried to figure out its needs for deans. And so when we had a need in the health area to actually create a director position, that VP Hearns and her team said that we don't need this dean position. We're going to fund this director in nursing position.
Is that, so we have, where we used to have two deans, one for the math and science area and one for humanities. We've combined that into one dean. Is that what's reflected here?
Correct.
Is that dean getting a substantial pay increase since she's doing two jobs at once?
That dean is highly supported. If there's any needs, we will make those adjustments.
Okay. Then I'm looking, campus security, I'm guessing involves our new sworn police officers as well as the campus security, the non-deputized in-house security that we've always. And are you contemplating any decrease in staffing for the non-sworn staffing?
This does not reflect any decrease. It actually includes the addition of one afternoon dispatcher as part of this budget.
And then 2-3-5-1-0, Staff Control Account. It was negative this year and it's going to slightly positive next year. Very slightly positive on personnel. But there's a difference of almost 2 million. And I have no idea what Staff Control Account gets.
So in budgeting, we do two things, is that we put a placeholder for all the compensation and benefit increases. So the 1.6 million that I made reference to. We also, in this account, this is a place where we hold the vacancy savings assumption. And so when we started our budget last year, after the board approved the budget and after faculty and staff received their annual compensation increases, we moved the money out of this Staff Control Account for those compensation increases. We actually moved those compensation increases into the departmental budgets across the college. So at this point in the budget process, the board hasn't approved the budget. We have not issued compensation increases. So we hold all the compensation increase dollars in this account. So to last year's budget, meaning the current-year budget, we had already moved the compensation benefit increases out. So all you saw in there was the assumed vacancy savings that the college was going to achieve. When you look at this year's budget, you're looking at both of those pieces. You're looking at the compensation benefit increases dollar amount whole, offset by the vacancy. So that's why you see the big swing.
I guess those are the big questions. I may, if there's some, I'll have another month to look at this. If there's some other smaller questions, I'll just send a note to the president with CC to you and to the other board members. Thank you for answering those questions. One other broad question. Before Vice President Flowers retired, we had, we looked at prospective major rehab on a lot of our buildings. And there was a, we had some, just very beginnings of discussion about where that money would come from, whether it could come out of our balance that we've built over the years or whether we could fund that by bonding. But none of that is reflected in this budget, except we're adding a little bit more into deferred maintenance.
Correct.
So we still have that issue to look at and to continue looking at.
Yep.
Okay. And is that something?
24 million.
Do you have a timeline when we're going to take a closer look at that?
Now that we have Mark Allen here, right? So I think that Mark is going to start to do a deeper assessment on those plans. And work with President Blanca and the administration to make a recommendation back to the board around the scope of those projects, the dollars and timing. And I would anticipate that that work needs to happen this summer so that we can come back to the board later in the fall with at least our initial thoughts around that.
So this upcoming fiscal year, we will be looking at that with?
A multi-year plan.
Start making some decisions.
Yep.
Okay, that was really a big question. Thank you for that answer.
Are you completed?
Those are the things, I just looked over this and took the big dollar variances. And there may be some small questions, but I'll send an email to the president with CCs to everybody.
Okay, those are good questions. Are there any other discussions regarding this? Now, we're going to go to Tab in. And that's a resolution to recommend the allowable 2018, 2019 add valarium tax rate. It's recommendation that the board approve the 2018, 2019 tax levy of 3.3978 mils for operations as submitted. The 3.3978 mils would generate approximately $55,622,334 of tax revenue.
Is this a discussion item or?
No. It says discussion.
It's a discussion item, okay.
It is a discussion item, okay. And then on the backside of the page, there is a breakdown of what this tax levy will generate, or tax levy resolution.
So this is, so this was, this is the rate that we just got from the county. So this is the heavily adjusted rate. And this is the, our estimate of the gross tax revenue applying that rate to the certified assessed values. And so we will be asking the board at the May meeting to approve this tax levy rate. And if the board so does that, then the board actually has to sign the copper document, which then we submit to the county so that our millage rates, as approved by the board, can get on the rolls for next year.
Okay, all right.
All right, move to close the Publix meeting.
It's been moved, so support.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Do we need a call?
Aye.
Okay. We will go into close.
What was that? I missed that, I'm sorry.
We will move to go into.
I just said aye.
He just said it out.
Move to go into close session.
We will go into closed session.